of the United States of America and to the global public's sense, one nation, united as one in this world with liberty and justice.
Okay, I'm assuming you have a form? I do. Okay, item number four is the agenda. And we are going to probably change the sequence. Under the district administrator's report, we are going to have some information about the charter school initiative and we have two guest speakers coming. So I would like to propose that we, if they're not here by the time we get to the district administrator's report, I would like to
If we move it after?
After the information only?
But if we move it into information only and put it as, we add that as B behind the Jump Start After School Program presentation?
I would be by the side.
Because the consent won't take very long, so.
Right, right. So that means moving the entire district administrator's report to
That is to the district administrator's report.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with moving item number eight down under item number 10 and flexibility to move it later depending upon the arrival of the speakers.
Yes, I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Then all in favor say aye. And motion hearing. Announcements?
She's gone in front of the district office. She just replied to me email. They're over here showing her. They're getting in for the district office.
Oh, okay.
It's an optional view.
Okay. Lady King. Are there any announcements, Jason?
No announcements.
Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is celebrations.
So we do have a celebration and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Klein because he was instrumental in having brought this back to the district.
So our Christmas shop, we brought it back this year and it was a, what I felt was a rousing success. For those of you who are not aware of our Christmas shop, what we do is we take donations from the community of gently used or new items. We set it up similar to a garage sale and everything is priced 25 cents, 50 cents, dollar or $2. Kids come through with their shopping list and we try to tell them $5 is all they should bring at a time. And then we have volunteers who come in and help kids go through and they shop for their family members. Then we have volunteers who wrap these gifts and then deliver them back to the kids so that they can take them home, put under the tree. It was a very big success again this year. Thank you as well for the donations. We got donations through American Legion, the Lions Club, Event City also made some donations, plus the people in the community who donated items. It was a wonderful success there for donations. We had lots of volunteers, some of the people in the community coming in. We had police officers from the Sheriff's Department come in and help our students go through and shop. Some volunteers came in and they were just amazed to see the smiles on the kids' faces and see the interactions that they were able to have. The families that made donations or sent $5. And then we had a lot of people that reached out and sent in some extra money just so that we made sure every child was able to get a chance to shop. So any child who wanted to shop had that opportunity. We went around and made sure that if they did, they had that opportunity. And then the next slide here is over the last few years, so we started this in 2015. That year we raised $750. The next year we had a $2,000 donation that we were able to make to PANS. That was because we had an anonymous donor that matched how much we sold that year. So we sold $1,000, we donated $2,000 then to PANS. 2017, we had $950. You can see in 2018 and 2019, those were the last few years before COVID, we had $1,300 and $1,200. This year, coming back, our first year back, we did $1,250 donated to PANS and that really does help a lot with our families in the community. So the money that we raised does go back into the community. I had a lot of people express how excited they're going to bring their gifts home and watch everybody unwrap. And it's a fun story for parents of some of the gifts and the reasoning that their children had on the gifts that they gave. So again, it was a wonderful success. It was wonderful to have the support of Ed and the board and staff that helped with it and then also the community being involved. And we did present the check at the Christmas program so that we were able to do it out in front of a lot of people and get the word out. And there is an article, it should be in Pittsburgh Record, hopefully this week. Just a little write-up about our Christmas shop this year.
Kudos to you.
Thank you so much. I know it took a lot of extra headwork on your end and I sincerely thank you for that. You did a great job.
It's a lot of work, but it is very much enjoyable to see the kids get that, so.
I can tell you if not for Mr. Klein, it was out of the bag. He had the kids very strongly to bring it back and it worked.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number seven, student representative.
All right, so we've got two things on the agenda. Number one was the movie afternoon that we did on December 22nd. This is the last day before break and let's be honest, no one really wants to do work when you're just waiting to get on Christmas break. So this was planned by student council and this is Grossman who is, she runs student council. The entire school, everyone that had good enough grades, which was, you couldn't have any missing work, had to have above, I think, a C. So it was very like reached out to most people. They went to Roger Cinema to watch either Akmen and Lanka. The reason that we chose these two movies and not two Christmas movies is because these two movies are new and we wanted people to be excited to watch the movies instead of some people that don't want to watch Christmas reruns. It was super successful. I was told by Dr. Watson that even people that weren't allowed to go, they did a lot of work, a lot of them caught right back up in their classes and supposedly at that beat that they announced it, everyone leaving on the Friday, there was one of the most, like the biggest rush of missing assignments that returned in. So it went very well.
All right, as far as the senior class plans for our gift and our trip, it's a little less set in stone than what we did. But the trip, we're going to either Little America or Topgolf. I think we can go to both because they're both in the same city, both in Minneapolis. And as far as the gift is, that is still undecided, up in the air. There's a lot of senior leaders other than just Brian and I and we have a hard time figuring out the exact specifics sometimes, so that's still up in the air, but we'll be back. That's it.
Is the movie day, is that the first time that you've done this?
I think so.
We had movie days at school in the past, but nothing paid on the scale.
Nothing like, so what happened was they took the buses, went to Roger Cinema, each student got a small soda and a small popcorn, free of charge, no one had to pay anything. It was all funded by student council. And then you got to choose one of two movies and had to be somewhat packed. It was the movie theater, I guess, but it went very well.
Thank you. We have to change our sequence in the agenda. Do you anticipate Dr. Ennis's time?
I think so.
I mean, yeah, I mean also, sorry.
We moved it to a little bit later. No, just to give some flexibility.
Yeah. Okay. So let's go on to what we have marked as agenda item number nine, consent agenda. Meeting notification, regular minutes, come December 11th, 2023. Financial status and all of those associated reports. Retirements, resignations, we have retirement resignation for Bonnie Hetstrom and Cynthia Sui. Hiring's two assistant track coach positions, Justice Soka and Seth Smasal. Are there any questions on the consent agenda items? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda item and I'd like to note, thank you to Bonnie and to Cynthia, who are many, many, many years in service and the great work happening at Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Is there a second?
No, there isn't.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion hearing. Next, we will go into the information only items. First of all, we will have Mr. Klein over here to talk about Jump Start and the After School Program.
Well, again, you're going to be sick of hearing me talk tonight, but I, Jason hears me talk all the time, so. I want to start with Jump Start just because we've been doing this for a little while. This was our third year we're running a Jump Start program. This was Mrs. Sui and Ms. Frericks get together in end of July, beginning of August before we come back for in-service. And we offer out to families a chance for them to sign up to have their students come in and get a little extra math or reading supports. So this was our third year of doing it. It's two weeks in August and what we do is we look to, for math and for reading, but for me, I'll speak to math part is each of the kids that come in, we review the math standards that were picked as essential standards by staff. And we review those standards and then if a student comes in and they're very, they're on task and they know where they're at, they're good with those skills, we'll start looking at those next year's skills. We've had students that have come in and have worked a year ahead just because they had all those standards already in place. But it gets for math and for reading, a lot of our students, when they take off for summer break, even though we offer summer school, they're not picking up a book and reading a book, they're not doing multiplication facts or looking at equations over those summer months. So this is a chance to give us that two-week period. So our focus will be in mathematics, reading, and then this last year, last two years now, we've offered a social-emotional piece where this year, I believe it was the older kids did do a social-emotional, the reading and the math. And the younger ones this year, so third grade and under, focused just on math and the reading because we had a larger number of students in need of a little extra reading supports. So in the past few years, we started in 2021 with 27 students and that was kids that were going into first grade through kids going into eighth grade. Then last year, we opened it up to kids going into kindergarten through eighth grade, which, so we added in one extra age group. So that's why our numbers are quite a bit higher compared to even this last year where we had 38 students who participated. Again, those were all first graders through eighth graders who participated. We did have one student who is a freshman this year, who asked if he could participate. He said that he really felt like reviewing the eighth grade math would be helpful for him going into his freshman year. And I've actually touched base with his family a couple of times this year and he said that it was very beneficial, that skills that we practiced were definitely things that he was seeing again this year and he felt pretty confident where he was with what we'd worked on. So we're looking at offering Jump Start again this summer and hopefully we'll sit around that 40 number for students.
Ron, you talked about, you know, it's open to all students. Are there some situations where there are certain students that if they're identified as having probably would benefit from this that are contacted to certain families?
Yeah, we put it out in our summer school packet, so there's information, talks about it, gives that sign up link so that they can sign up. And then as we go through, we look through our list, there are the, Ms. Sui, Ms. Frericks and I will sit down and we'll look at the list and say, and I was math interventionist before the dean of students role, so we'll look at students who are in the math intervention or the reading intervention and we'll reach out to the families. Some families will say, yeah, we'd like to sign up. Some say, well, we're going on our vacation right before school starts back up. Some of them, it's a transportation issue that they don't sign up, you know, and with the wide range of ages, we really try to juggle the groups so that we can have pretty close to like age groups. We don't want to put eighth graders in with a second grade group because diversity is that way, but if we can split it where we can offer families, where we can split it so that their families kind of line up a little bit, they don't have to make as many trips in. And we will also point out a few families that might live near each other that if we can get them in the same grouping that they think are cool, so that does help create that way.
How long are each of these sessions?
That's a great question. It depends on how many students we have sign up and how the age groups break up. We try to go A.A. until noon with an hour of math, an hour of reading. This last year, we had enough where we needed to split it in three sections, so luckily we were allowed to extend that an extra half hour. So then we did 45 minutes of math, 45 minutes of reading, and then we'd swap. And then so the kids that we worked with in the school for reading, we're going to come to you for math and then we split my math group up. So we're looking at anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour of both math and reading time. So it does help create it that way.
If it's something that you identify as a need, but I'm very, it's supposed to be something that you want, maybe it's something you want, so we identify a group of actions that you need.
Yeah.
Pam, I'm going to kind of defer to you as far as if you, I don't think you can prohibit us.
No, we could certainly offer transportation. It's just been, it's kind of classified, we did direct a bus around the district for the kids. Right, right. If there's only enough, we could sit in a van, we could do it.
I think probably what it would be in those conversations, not having participated in the conversations, would be when talking to the families about what barriers may be if that comes up, that I notice from other experiences is that we will go to the end of the year to try to get kids in here. So that would certainly not be offered.
The one problem we've run into right now is, and I'm not against that option, is if you have an hour and a half window where they're here and they're getting reading and math, when that next group comes in, if one of us are driving, then it takes us out of the equation for providing that Jump Start time. We did the first year, actually the first two years. This year, we took donations, like Ms. Sui, I, Ms. Frericks donated some things. We had a couple of parents that also reached out and said, hey, we'll also donate because it doesn't fall into the summer school lunch program because it's at, you know, weeks after what our summer school runs. So we don't have that funding to provide that right now. So that's been something that this last year was augmented by, again, Austin and a couple of parents who felt like they could donate. So we'd love to. The first two years offering that snack was a huge benefit to our families because again, we do have quite a few that do have those food incentives that we do want to offer.
I know that if you get the grant, it's on the list of what are those plans to, like, there is, there is something within it for Jump Start.
Wonderful. Yeah, that would be tremendous. Because I know that first, the first two years that we did it, that was something that was built in that, but I think our summer school is set up a little bit differently and it was, the budget for, through the state was a little bit different.
Right, so for '21 and '22, we had free lunches all summer long. It didn't matter on the timeframe. For this last year, we could only offer free lunches during the few weeks that we did our full summer school. So had those two weeks been tacked on at the end, we could have just extended it, but because there was the gap, they wouldn't allow us to do.
Yes. Because it would be more successful to do it right before they come back to school.
Yeah. What were the grade levels?
So the 2021 and 2023, we had kids going into first grade through kids going into eighth grade. So if they were in kindergarten through seventh grade during that previous year, those kids were the ones that we invited. This one year, we thought, hey, let's try bringing in kindergarten, kids going into kindergarten, but there was just such a big gap between them and what the kids are doing when they're going into first grade. Like it was, it was really hard to get them to fit in.
Now they do the 4K summer school program.
So they can group them based on age, obviously?
Yeah.
And there'd be some inner?
So our groupings tend to be, so like if they were first grade, we tried to get first, second and third grouped as closely as we could. And then that fourth, fifth, maybe fourth, fifth, sixth, depending on the kid, and then that seventh, eighth or six, seven, eight, depending. So we really try to group them and we might have a group, because Ms. Sui will be working with kids for reading, she and Ms. Frericks might have sixth, seventh, eighth graders while I have kindergarten, first grade, a group because maybe family dynamics, they could go all ride together that way. And then that next group, you might have another sixth, seventh, eighth and three, four. So we really try to juggle it to meet as many needs as possible.
So if you got a student that's like on kind of the buyer, like either it's going in, you know, one through third and they're struggling a little bit being in the fourth, fifth and sixth, you might just say, you're going to join this group or how is that?
We have done that. It also depends on how, like if they have other kids that are in their age group in that other group, some of them really want to stay with peers and it's uncomfortable to work with maybe a grade ahead or a grade behind them because they might not know those kids. But we have made those adjustments and we work with families too. A family says, hey, this timeframe doesn't work, but I do have this neighbor who could drive them in. This time will work. We look at how we can juggle those groups. It takes, honestly, it's about a two-week period to try to get everybody pieced in so that.
Once you get it figured out, it's almost.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
So I'm assuming then you have some students that are saying, I already get these.
Yeah.
And I would like to, you know, a step on the ladder.
And maybe if you don't mind, I'll use your son as a great example. When he came those first two years, he was doing very well with his grade level material, so I worked him ahead. So he was always, we looked at, I had a pre-test and I'm like, okay, these are the essential standards that they heard, you know, these each age group picked. And so I would test those and if they had those, it didn't pay for me to go back and repeat that. So then I would go after those next set. And I would say sometimes it was a little bit of a struggle because it's material that he wasn't quite ready for, but we'd work through it and, you know, so we've done that with different students too.
I think it's a wonderful program, so just like if there are barriers of us giving what kids would do.
And I think that first year, we ran it as a three, was it a three-week program? The problem was that third week, a lot of families went on their trips. So we, yeah, the attendance was really pretty rough that last week. So then we went to a two-week, which helps a little, but it's still, there's a lot of families that then will plan their vacation that last week. So no matter if we do two or three, there's going to be some of those attendance things that way, but we reached, you know, a pretty decent number of students and pretty happy with where we're at there.
Any other questions on Jump Start? All right, she tells us about the after-school program.
The after-school program has been quite a roller coaster of a ride. We found out during Jump Start that we received the grant and so Jason had asked if I would be interested in doing this. So we started our sign-ups. I was out for our meet and greet and got information out to families and we started taking some sign-ups. When we opened October 2nd, we had 42 students registered, an average of about 30, 30-ish kids a night. As of January 2nd, we have 70 students now registered for the after-school program and about 42 students a night that are attending. And I do envision our numbers will continue to grow. The grant, when it was written, I believe it was written for 25 to 40 students and so we're already exceeding that. Right now, we have some nights where we have 47 students that are coming. During this, we have a rotation of seven staff members who work pretty much a night or two each week. And then Wednesdays, because of early release, we want somewhere for our students to go. So we reached out, partnered with Discovery Education Station out of Marshfield. They bring four staff members and so we split those students up. And during that time, there's homework time and then Discovery Education Station does some enrichment activities with students while I work with groups with homework time. This is one of the pictures from Discovery earlier in the year. They're doing a project where they're using pine cones and they're making turkeys with those. So it was quite a fun experience there. Our next slide here talks about some of the other opportunities during our after-school program. We do have a snack provided, so Matt, if I give him the notice in advance, he bags up snacks for students. So it does help tremendously there. So, you know, thank you to Matt and the kitchen staff for their hard work with that. We have anywhere from seven to 13 kids each night that need busing so that they participate in these programs. The busing is free to families, it does come out of the grant. We have two nights where the bus does go down to City Point, so those are longer trips, takes a little longer, so the bus is out. We did move our time up when we got to Thanksgiving. Our program runs from right after school till 5:30 every night. So we were running the bus at 5:30, but when we got to Thanksgiving, just because of the potential for winter weather, we did move that bus time up for departure for them for a five o'clock time. And we're going to run that till spring break and then at spring break, we're going to move it back to 5:30. As far as for next year, we'll look at that timeframe if we want to move that up to a five o'clock all the time for the busing just to kind of allow those bus drivers to get back from their route and not have such a long break in between their bus route to when they come back and return kids from the after-school program. Some of our enrichment activities, we've done things like yoga, as you can see here. We've had, we do Lego time with the younger ones, they really enjoy that. Board games with all of the age groups and that's something that's built into the grant that we can use some of the funds to purchase. But we haven't purchased a lot of board games yet because with the number of staff that we need and the number of students we're servicing, we haven't been able to purchase everything that we want to at this point. We do use the cardio room, so we take small groups of fourth through eighth graders down in the cardio room, have shown them how to use the treadmills, how to use the ellipticals and give them about 15, 20 minutes in the cardio room. We did a cooking night with Mr. Resurrection and Mr. Flores. They did a cultural cooking, so Taste of the Philippines activity. We are planning to do another one, the kids absolutely love that. In the process of talking with Ms. Galiban to see if we could do a Taste of Mexico, having her come in and do a cooking night. We have reached out to the first responders at the fire station to see if we could get them. We had them scheduled to come in for a first aid CPR night, but they got called away and couldn't come in that night. And we have reached out a couple of times, we're going to continue to reach out, see if we can get a few people to come in and teach students cribbage. That would be a great way for them to work on math skills and learn some fun card games and things like that. So a lot of activities happen at the after-school program. They come, they get their snack, I read the story while they're eating their snack. We break and do two separate groups, homework time and then enrichment time. And then the end is, you know, either an outside activity when it's not dark right away or, you know, different activities that they can use for choice at that time.
Questions?
Do you feel there's any students that are like feeling forced to be there from their parents to like, you know, free childcare type of?
I would say there's probably some of that. I think it does help for families because, and I will say, we did have, the daycare did run a program, but they were servicing about 14 students. We're right now servicing 70 students and a lot of those students are because they couldn't afford the daycare. So it does allow for parents to finish their work day out. They're not a latchkey kid that's getting sent home and we don't know if somebody's home or not, they're supervised, they aren't getting that snack. We do offer that homework help and I talk to my junior high, because I intend to work with the junior high kids. Um, we do offer that homework help and we, I talk to my junior high, because I intend to work with the junior high kids uh, a little bit more because, um, they, they respond to me pretty well. So it's, uh, quite a few who expressed that they really actually enjoy the after school program. Now, we do have a few who don't wanna be there that long, uh, but the kids, I have a good number that are there all four nights that we offer, so.
Do we have anyone using the after school program in our childcare or is everyone using this that they need?
I believe.
We have to discontinue it.
The after school.
It was, it was kind of a conflict still, the, the, all of the childcare afternoon. So anyone four and older aren't able to go to this, uh, CCLC program. So the under fours will still stay in the childcare. And really what this is, my understanding is this has opened up more, um, room and staffing for other age groups.
Yeah, they.
So it actually helps the childcare program.
Cause Ron and Tabitha, like we, we knew early in stages that this could have an impact on the after school care with, uh, PCC. So, uh, they actually sat down and kind of collaborated and, um, talked about what that impact might be. And, and that would be factual is that, you know, originally I think Tabitha would have told you, there was some concern on her end, but then they talked about, how could we reallocate resources based upon this? And Chris, you're absolutely right. There are some kids that feel that way. You know, I bet you if you talk, walked around school, there's some kids that feel like their parents make them come to school during the school day.
And it's always interesting for me to walk down the hallway in the school. You probably have heard this when I walk down the hallway. These kids will say, hey, am I, am I on your list today? And then I have some that'll say, when am I gonna be on your list? And so we have some kids who might not always enjoy coming and then we have some that really want to come. And so there, there's a mix. Again, there's some that, as you said, would prefer that they have to come during the school day. But, uh, you know, this is, again, it gives them a safe place to go after school, provides them that snack for, you know, those that might have some security. Provide that bussing if the family absolutely needs it. Now, we don't offer it out to all seventy kids that are assigned out. It's if a family said, hey, we'd like to participate, but we will struggle to get there to pick them up. Um, so that's why we're at seven thirteen. And at nights where we drop below that seven, um, I will sign out the school van and I'll run kids home, save on that budget. Because the, you know, that eight thousand a year sounds like a lot until you start figuring in the staffing and the bussing and, and all those other things, it does go pretty quickly. So at nights that we don't need bussing, I will call and I'll let Dan know we're gonna cancel the bus and I'll run the school van and drop it.
So a little information about that is when applying for the grant, we had, they had a threshold. And we had originally set out to apply for the larger threshold, but we became concerned not having done this. What if we were unable to meet the daily average? So we decided to err on the side of caution. In hindsight, um, you know, we're, we're meeting those numbers or nearing those numbers that would have been for twice the grant amount. So we, and we did, I, I think we knew the answer, but I asked Ron to reach out to DPI to inquire, hey, we've exceeded our, our numbers dramatically and we're under the budget. Is there any money left? And the answer of course was.
The answer is not at this time, um, if you're five year cycle and when you reapply, reapply for the larger grant. Um, so we have, you know, talked about looking at some other, other funding sources. Um, one problem that you run into with this grant is like, if you wanted to do fundraising, you have to apply to do fundraising. Well, we didn't know we had the grant until after that window closed. So this March, when they open up for us to do rock sales or other things to help raise some funds, um, we'll be applying to do that because we really honestly, it would be beneficial to have another staff member. I have, I'm in the process of reaching out to Crossroads to see if, uh, we have members in the community that would like to come in and work with you. Uh, looking at high school on Wednesday nights, we have some tutors from National Honor Society come down and work with some students. Um, but it's, it's hard to get high school students during the other days because as soon as school ends, a lot of them are in an extracurricular. So their practices start right after school. That window on Wednesdays is because we have that early release at two oh five. Um, so from two oh five till three, three-thirty, we can get a high, you know, few high schoolers come down and work the students as well. So.
What about the feasibility of, uh, getting, applying for AmeriCorps slots?
We, I believe we've looked at it and at the moment, there's not, um, there's not an, uh, Randy and I talked about this. And I think at the moment, there's not an open, uh, place to apply. They, they don't have an AmeriCorps member at the moment that we can apply for. Um, but it has been talked about and we're, we're still in the process of looking at it. So we're trying to find other ways to bring in some people.
So we were approved for two AmeriCorps positions last school year that we had, uh, we tried for a year and never found anybody. We had a couple of prospects and stuff. It's really, you know, tho- those folks are few and far between.
We had two positions also in different departments either. I mean, and so it's not even just about the fact that you get paid for. Can't actually find someone to take the position. Well, and, and see, I, I believe there's some recruitment strategies that could be done proactively. Like you start talking to the seniors in high school now to educate them about the AmeriCorps program. Um, so then maybe a year from now, they might be interested in doing something like that. Um, so I, I think, yeah, I think it, it takes some thoughtful recruitment.
I will say, we also have in, in the grant for UWSP to send over, um, some pre-service teachers, but we're struggling to get them to come over too.
Um, because of the distance.
The distance and, uh, uh, the time commitment. It is, we've had numerous conversations. Uh, we were supposed to start in November, then we were supposed to start in January. Um, and I haven't heard anything back at this point. So that is a bit of a struggle.
Um, when will you have your first parent night?
It's a great question. I will say that we talked about having one before Christmas break. And with everything with the, uh, programs and things, that was tough. Um, I think really, when I talked to the DPI, they said the first year, their big focus is how the program is running. Uh, the next year is, that's what, it is going to need to be at least a quarterly, uh, parent night. And right, parent enrichment, uh, you know, parent engagement, parent education nights. Um, so we haven't gotten to that point. Um, but it is on the plan. We are talking about a, uh, end of January, beginning of February night where we bring parents in for a parent engagement night. We had talked about doing a movie night of maybe Frozen and, uh, seeing if we can get parents and provide a small, uh, meal for families as well. But, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's tough to find a night where we can get a lot of engagement from families due to, uh, whether it's sports or, you know, we have a lot of families who participate in, in other, uh, extracurriculars, whether they're going to bands or gymnastics or things that we don't necessarily offer here. So kids are running a lot of different places. So it is hard to get that engagement night.
Um, I think one of the other, um, parts of the application was a, a community advisory committee. Um, can you tell me any progress on that?
I would say that I have not gotten any progress on that at the moment. So, um, it's, it's been, it's been a lot of planning, uh, and a lot of work at this point, but no, I have not done that part.
Thank you. It's exciting, exciting stuff for our kids. I believe it. I think it's a game changer. Okay, we're going to go on to, um, District Admin, the Inserted District Administrators Report.
Yep, that will be our charter school presentation. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have our two visitors tonight introduce themselves to get started, if you don't mind.
Sure, I'll do that. Uh, I'm Ed B. Andrews and everybody else who told me I became executive to the Marshfield campus. And, uh, thank you for having me tonight. Thank you, uh, thank you, of course, Jason. Thank you, of course. I appreciate you having me here. And, uh, this is our consultant, the, uh, Steve, I don't know the name, and she's going to do a presentation tonight.
So I, I thought it would be helpful for the board here just to, and, and since the board meeting is being televised, uh, or streamed, that we could potentially just start off by kind of giving an overview of charter. I think there's a lot of things floating around about what a charter school is and I think honestly, it, it's almost like it's kind of like a dirty word in some circles, charter school. It's like charter schools are picking enrollment from public schools and it, and I think that once people find out more details about public charters versus private charters. So maybe perhaps, and I know this is kind of your real awesome, maybe we can start just by a, what is a charter school and what is a public charter school? Yeah, if you guys go to the podium, then I think that's.
So, um, yeah, just a little more introduction. So, uh, I work with Wisconsin Resource Center, the Charter Schools. And we're an organization that works with districts and authorizers and charter schools all across the state of Wisconsin. Um, the organization was initially initiated during the last grant round for, for charter schools. And right now, we're now going into a second grant round. So I'll talk a little bit more about that when we, um, get into this potential proposal. But charter schools have been around since, um, the late nineteen nineties. The first charter school started in Minnesota and so we're their neighbor. And, um, quickly it kind of, um, has spread across the United States. Just about every state, um, currently has some sort of charter school law on the books. So every state's law looks a little bit different. So how charter schools are authorized and exist in each state looks a little different from state to state, but there's federal laws that make, make it so that there's some norms from state to state around charter schools. And one of the biggest differences in charter schools across the United States is how they're authorized. So what a charter school is, is an organization that's running a school has an agreement with somebody that's authorizing that charter school so that there's checks and balances. So, um, different than, uh, an independent school or private school, which can really function in whatever way they want to. There's not really checks and balances. A charter school is part of the public school system within the state that it exists. So it abides by all of the laws that govern, um, public schools within the state. And then there's additional expectations of those charter schools. So when we think about, um, what your district has to do for all of your students that are participating in your traditional school programs, charter schools are governed by all of those same laws. And so in the state of Wisconsin, um, for most of the time that we've had charter schools, the only organizations that can authorize charter schools are districts. And so most of our charter schools in the state of Wisconsin are authorized by school districts. And so those schools can either be, this is gonna be a lot of information, sorry, an instrumentality or a non-instrumentality. Most of them are instrumentalities, which means that the school functions just as another school within the district. The district is the employer of all of the staff members within the school. Um, the, you know, the district administrative team oversees the charter school in the same way that it does other schools in the district. Um, non-instrumentalities function more as an independent school. They employ their own staff, all of that sort of thing. About six years ago, the state transitioned where now there can be independent charter schools within the state of Wisconsin. There were a few prior to that, but really just in the, in Milwaukee area overseen by, um, uh, the Milwaukee public school system. And so now, uh, schools such as, um, UW Systems or technical colleges can also authorize charter schools in the state. So far, there hasn't been a lot of that action just because it's so new. Um, one of the organizations, when they passed that law that came into an existence is the Office of Educational Opportunity, which is housed through UW Systems. And so they're guaranteed one authorizer at least for independent charter schools to authorize with. So so far, most of the independent charter schools that have come, come up in the last five years are all authorized through that Office of Educational Opportunity. Um, but again, we have about two hundred and sixty-two charter schools across the state of Wisconsin. And a majority, I believe ninety-five percent of schools are all authorized through school districts just like yours. Um, yeah.
Okay, Mark, could you just, because I'm not sure everyone understands the.
Yep.
Different, why, why would a parent choose to send their child to a charter school in, in a school district?
Perfect, great question. Yeah.
I got teeing it up. I love it. Thank you.
So, um, you know, students learn in all sorts of different ways. And our traditional school systems are able to meet the needs of the majority of our students. But we have some students that are gonna learn potentially better in a system that maybe works and operates a little bit differently. So charter schools have the autonomy to develop a curricular program that, uh, looks a little bit different than a traditional school program. And there's no overreaching theme. So you're not gonna see the same thing in every charter school that you go to. Part of the chartering process is developing that curricular plan for that specific school that's opening. And so depending on if it's an elementary school, a middle school, a high school, you know, there's different curricular options that charter schools choose. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about project-based learning tonight. Um, STEM is another one that's very common. Waldorf Education, uh, Montessori, right? So all of these slightly different curricular styles can be implemented in a charter school. So a parent within a school district then has educational options for their students to try and find what's gonna work best for them. It might be the traditional school system, but it also might be the, the charter school system. And we're seeing a lot, especially in our little school districts across the state, by offering these educational opportunities, the variety of programming, they're able to better meet the needs of students within their districts. And sometimes in smaller school districts, they're able to attract students to their school districts specifically because they have these educational opportunities that aren't being offered in other areas. For instance, one of the charter schools, um, the first school that I had an opportunity to be a co-founder of, the Tomorrow River Community Charter School, which is over in the smarter school districts in the embers. Eighty percent of the students that are attending that school are open enrolling into the school districts. So a small school district has had, had the opportunity to grow by over two hundred students because they're offering this innovative programming that's not being offered in the surrounding school districts. Um, and so the money that follows the students, and maybe which might be another one of your questions. So those students get that per pupil allotment funding, just like any other student within your school district. So that funding source doesn't change for those students. If the students are open enrolling, exactly the same as if a student's open enrolled into your traditional school. The state funding follows them, your local funding stays within your school district. Now, the students attending independent charter school, that funding is just solely coming from the state. For our independent charter schools, it's as if the entire state is their school district. So they're not open enrolling to that school. They are just attending a school and getting state funding for that school. Um, so this is different than private schools that are getting funding for students that are attending their programming. So very, very separate. Um, and I think that's where a lot of that confusion can potentially happen. Voucher programs are money that is going to private schools. Charter schools live within the public school system. So that money isn't leaving the public school system. It's just going to another school that is within essence, a school district. Um, so it's staying within the school system, just like, um, the money that's currently coming in for any of the students that are attending your traditional school programming.
Any other questions, Mary? I was thinking that people might want to know answers still.
So, but, cause if I understand what you just said, but it does cross us. Or maybe I'm jumping way ahead because I just saw that there's some attachments. So I clicked on and I had seen you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so maybe there's.
So this is just like big picture. I'll jump into like discussing some of what this can look like.
Okay, got it. Yeah. So if we had a charter school and we ran the charter school and it was our charter school, there could be like an elementary, a high school and a charter.
Yeah.
All within it, again, kids are enrolled. They pick which one is, and all the money stays within the district and we provide all the support.
Yeah.
Potentially, there's another option, which is someone else provides the support and then we, we would still, they're still a student, but we would fund some of that.
Yeah. And so that money would in essence flow through the school district to then follow that student to pay for additional programs. So your district is always gonna keep a portion for administrative costs, but because you're not necessarily doing the day-to-day teaching of that student, that funding could go to somebody else that's doing that day-to-day teaching of the student. Yeah, but the money would all flow through your school district. Those students would count as your students. So when you do your Thursday, Friday count, anything like that, those students all come as your district's students.
So similar to, um, virtual school.
Yes, exactly. Right. I mean, schools are church school.
Oh, yes. Got it. So RVA. This is very similar to RVA.
Should, should, uh, those two presentations should get a little more into the, the, the details. It'll cover some of this stuff, which you talked about, yes, but in essence, it's.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, and. Yeah, and so, and so in the state, you know, there's, I think a third of our charter schools are virtual schools. We have a whole lot of school districts, especially through COVID, that started a virtual charter school program within their districts. And some of the reason that, you know, that's just another way that you're diversifying, right? And meeting the needs of the students within your district. Some students are gonna learn better from home, but you know, they still count as your public school student. They're still participating in public school programming and you are ultimately responsible for that learning. And that's what that charter contract is between the charter school and the authorizer, which you as the district would be, is an agreement where that school needs to demonstrate the learning that's taking place for those students. That school is ultimately responsible to you to demonstrate the success of the program that's taking place. And so those charter contracts are usually a five-year agreement. Annually, those schools will present on how the students are doing, what's taking place. It might even happen monthly, depending on what the relationship is with the school. And after five years, you're like, yes, this is amazing, the students are flourishing, the program's growing. Then you would make that decision to renew that contract if you wanted to.
So a student could choose to say, I just wanna stay home and get my education from online through this charter program?
No.
Oh, not?
No, they could do that right now, just to be clear through argument. That we have right now, or anyway, that would be an option, but that's not what this is.
But RVA is not a charter school.
No, we let them participate and we pay.
But it's not on purpose.
Exactly.
Right, we have them to authorize.
I wonder if, I think maybe.
But what you're, again, maybe really jumping ahead, but what we're potentially looking at wouldn't be our charter school either, right?
Yes, it would, but it would not be a virtual option. I think that's a piece that we probably might be.
Yeah, so let's set the virtual space aside. Yeah. So should we jump in?
I think we can do that because we can follow back on the question.
Right, and then we can add more questions.
Yeah, so they're able to focus a little bit, find a specific opportunity.
So will it work through your lane?
Which one, what's the lane?
Deb should be able to pull.
Which one do you want?
Yeah, the first one's great.
Charter school, I should tell you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect, let's just start. Great. Yeah, it's starting at the P D F, but we can just scroll through it, that should be just fine.
Mm-hmm.
So the idea that we're presenting to you is something that's been in the works for years, really, is contemplating how can we provide educational opportunities for our junior and senior students within really the Marshfield and larger community. And so we can jump right to the next slide. People had access to this, so they can see these things. So this would be a Marsh, you know, be a Marshfield-based program that students would be participating in. So the charter school is your charter school, but the students are coming to Marshfield for onsite programming with teachers that would be there at Marshfield. And the focus of this programming would be STEM, so science, technology, engineering, math, through a project-based learning experience. And so I'll go into a little of what that project-based learning experience will look like, so I won't focus on it now. But the goal of this is for students to really find that bridge between high school and life beyond high school and whatever that life is gonna potentially look like for those students. So it'd be preparing students for work life, preparing students for the potential of college, preparing students for the potential of a two-year university, because they would be gaining college credit while they're in this two-year junior and senior program. So it'd be giving them life skills through project-based learning, but also these credits that would set them up for success in whatever they decided to do after that program. Thank you. So we are utilizing water as our vehicle for this integrated curriculum style through project-based learning. And we really feel like this is gonna connect to a lot of job opportunities throughout this area, as well as just understanding the complexity of the world, the interconnectedness, which is how we're gonna be presenting curriculum. So in a traditional school setting, your occupancy curriculum will be broken up into subject areas. And there might be some interconnections, but not necessarily a lot. Within this project-based learning style, all of those subjects are gonna be interconnected together because it's gonna be much more career-focused and career-based and also just seeing, you know, how math connects to science, how science connects to language arts, right? So those are gonna come in full packages together. So the graduation requirements will look a little bit different than students that are graduating from your high school. But the standards that those students are meeting are all gonna be the same standards that a traditional high school student graduating would look like. It's just how they're meeting those standards are gonna look a little bit different and how they're meeting those curricular requirements are gonna look a little different. Because some of those requirements are gonna be met through independent projects that they're working on. And those independent projects will come with curriculum standards that they're meeting. And then some of those requirements are gonna come through the face-to-face working that's taking place from the teachers through UW-SP Marshfield.
I have a question, just to put it further. So you're saying we, you are funding like what UW Systems?
Yes, I am representing UW Marshfield, yes.
So this proposal is for students from here to go to Marshfield?
And receive UW-SP Marshfield credits. So they'll be receiving college/university credits from our program on our campus.
So if a student from Granton, this student goes to this granting, it's a granting student going to the charter school? Or is it a granting student?
So we're, we'll get to that. There are regular questions, there are regular questions, and we're gonna get to that part, yes. So we can, we can, yeah. So this moves into this implementation part of what that looks like. So that curriculum, water-centered coursework in the Chinese study, these project-based learning, work-study, like I've mentioned, this college dual credit access. So not only are they gonna be getting credit for those main courses that we're offering, they're gonna have opportunities to take additional credits through UW Marshfield or somewhere else in that. So we build what they're wanting to do. They would potentially have the opportunity to take courses here within your home district as well, like say Vanderquier or something like that, that we're not able to offer. Our goal is to figure out how to make sure those students can still be able to participate in that programming here at Pittsville. Yeah. Okay, so our vision, and again, right now, we're in like high-level visioning because this is like a pre-planning planning year. So this is our visioning time. We would then go into an entire year, all next school year of planning. So we are not proposing students would enter the classroom until twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. But our vision is that three days a week, and those may be just three solid days, half-days, right? We don't have that, those very specific, my new details aren't figured out yet. But approximately three days a week of face-to-face learning would be taking place through professors at UW-SP Marshfield. Those other two days, right, in essence, that other time is going to be spent on independent projects, work-study, taking other college courses, potentially taking courses here. So those students participating in the program really have this ability, they have autonomy over what their two years with us looks like. They will have a mentor, one of our teachers, that will be directly working with them to help them develop their plan for that two-year time that they're with us. So this is that relationship part, so that advisory part. So in essence, it's almost like every single student has an I U P in a sense that they have a person, an advisor, specifically to developing this plan and curriculum for them. We know that we're gonna get a variety of students that are interested in this type of programming. We're gonna get our high flyers that want their college credit, that are incredibly successful at school and really ready to take it to the next level. We're also gonna find our students who just are not successful in a traditional school setting, but are potentially successful in a Amazon environment. A place where they can like really get credit for actually working, get credit for these things that they have interested in and want to do. And so it's finding this place where students can have success at all of these different levels. And so that direct relationship with that advisor is gonna help those students find success no matter where they are and what their future goals are. So some of the partnerships that we're gonna be building up in essence over this next year and a half, which are instrumental to making this happen and be successful, is an organization, Freshwater Collaborative of Wisconsin, is kind of our impetus for our excitement about water, meaning that, that thing that ties all of this curriculum together. We're gonna be working with all the state universities here in Wisconsin, government agencies, of course, businesses. And that's a lot of what we'll do over the next year and a half, is create those relationships and businesses. So we have places to place these students to do that work-study and to do that project-based learning. Nonprofits and of course, community members across the state that again, will be those ties and connections that we need for P D L. So our vision is that we're open to eleventh and twelfth graders, and that's where we want to start. You know, this is amazing, and a lot of students want to participate. We see that it would really be beneficial for ninth and tenth graders, we could potentially expand down. But right now, our vision and what really we feel like makes sense is at eleventh and twelfth grade level. And that's really where they're ready for that college-level courses potentially. They're ready for kind of that next step of their high school career. And yes, and then this goal one, year one, we hope that we would have approximately thirty students participating in this programming, growing up to potentially, you know, a hundred students. And these students wouldn't all be coming from Pittsville, but they would be coming from all of our surrounding small school districts to participate in this program. And we'll get to what that potentially looks like. So that's under authorizing options. And so we talked about what it means to be an authorizer. So that is a school district that oversees a charter school. And so there's different ways that this can look. But if we were to envision that Pittsville is ultimately the authorizer of this charter school, if there are students in districts outside of Pittsville who want to participate in this programming, those students would all open enroll into Pittsville to then participate in this charter school option. There's an option where multiple districts could actually have their own charter schools and all of those students would be participating in this programming. That's definitely an option. Right now, it's feeling like Pittsville has this potentially the strongest will and potential commitment to this program and that it would be the biggest benefit to Pittsville if you were the single authorizer because that's then the potential of the other district students authorizing in. We've had conversations with multiple districts across the region. And especially in the larger districts, they feel like they'd rather just have the students open enroll out because they, I don't know how to word it, just don't.
They're just.
They're just, they're not interested in taking on another thing.
Thing.
Yeah, you know, they are offering so many things, they just don't wanna add another thing to their plate, especially at the infancy. They'd rather just like lose the students. They have so many students that losing ten or twenty just isn't a make it or break it thing, right?
Well, one of the districts have said that, because I can't imagine we all have that.
It's like bigger districts, so like Wisconsin Rapids and Marshfields and, you know, districts that are.
But to be clear, there's been outreach to smaller districts as well in the area.
For sure, definitely to smaller districts and.
We have, can we talk about last year, Tony, when you stopped and visited?
No, please.
Maybe this afternoon before this discussion.
I don't like the historical perspective.
Just briefly, I'll just do this because Camille's done such an excellent job with this presentation. I'm sure I'll bring you to death by stating the story. But basically, the concept with this, as Camille said, started a few years ago. The chancellor said, this is great, you know, why aren't we doing something like this in central Wisconsin? Well, just, again, the difference is you have to have something or somebody that wants to do something like this, that has the vision to be able to see something like this. And so the chancellor said, I think this is great. So he, he had the School of Education with the campus executive time go around to different school districts. And then they began to do, have discussions about this. And they began to, to send out the community surveys and ask, you know, what are you guys thinking about this? So we had a lot of people answer, this sounds like it's a great idea. So I came on board this year, I came here, just a little bit of background for me. I come from the New York City Public School Educational System. And I come from the City University of New York, I came here about a year ago. And one of the reasons I came here was because I heard that this was about to happen. But I kind of said, well, it's not really about to happen, but it's something that could happen. I said, well, I came here because I thought this was such a fantastic idea. So my doctoral dissertation focused on the impact of leadership training on certain populations at four-year college. And so I thought this was great because I understand the significance of STEM. I understand that, just as you all understand the significance of STEM, in particular in areas such as arts, right? We do not have the resources in a lot of the school districts to be able to provide STEM training and education, right? But Jayson obviously knows it being a STEM professional, right? What I wanted to do is to try to get everybody to understand what this could do in terms of finding the resources they couldn't buy in their school districts. A lot of the small school districts said, yeah, that sounds great. The large school districts, well, we're not so sure we need it, we have resources. But tell us what it looks like a year from now, and then we'll think about it. So when you start projects such as this, you may not have everybody that wants to come on board in the beginning because people wanna see what it looks like, right? We're in the midst of planning, we have a five-year grant that we're gonna go after. Would you give us a year from now? We can fit this, not a split hanging around hole. We can fit this because we can shape the hole to make this what we want it to be. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And Tony, not to interrupt, but last year when you and I met, when you came down, we sat in my office and started collaborating, talking about this at the time, it was kind of still in the flood of stages. But one comment I have made was, and Chris, I know you touched on that, you know, about the virtual option for, students are gonna find, if we don't offer something that fits what they need, where it looks like, they're gonna find some routes. The lure for me at the time was, there's really no harm here on our end because we would keep our, like, if they offered this charter school, this STEM charter school, and kids wanted to attend it, if we weren't like assigning on board, we would just lose enrollment. Our students, much like those larger districts, said, we don't care. So that was what originally interested me, was there's really no loss for us to participate in the, moving forward in the planning stages. What has become more intriguing in the meantime is, what they just referenced is, is with the lack of other schools participating, I was more thinking about keeping our own students and maybe attracting a couple, that if we were at that point the only school, if students attended from other schools, those would be considered our students as far as, you know, you saw the year-one goal, thirty students, and then down the road to continue the program. So it started with the idea of saying, it's another option for our students, really with little resource commitment from us to be able to explore those options. And then it's kind of morphed into something else. But I'm glad you mentioned that, is I'm not gonna sit and tell you everything is planned out, what this is gonna look like because the whole year, this is, this is a year and a half from now before there really gonna be boots on the ground with this, just planning what this is gonna look like. So we don't even know what the curriculum might be.
Well.
Yes and no.
Yes and no, right, we don't have, we know the framework of what it's gonna look like, but yes, we don't have our like daily schedule or course look, exactly.
Big picture, we, we thought that, you know, we were trying to figure out, because everybody kept asking us, like, so what's the curriculum gonna play, you know? You're talking about STEM, well, STEM is broad. So we understand that those are some of the fastest-growing professions in the nation, right? We want our kids to be able to get some of those jobs. But what really is gonna be the focus? So thankfully, we, I mean, we have the dean of the School of Sciences. And so Brian says to me, he goes, Tony, I think that freshwater should be the focus. You know, we have all these bodies of water in central Wisconsin. So why is nobody focused on freshwater? So there are all these professions that are related to water. But yet, no one in central Wisconsin is doing it. Madison's doing it. That sounds good enough for me from the beginning, right? Wouldn't you say Madison's doing something that we're not doing, right? So why are we not giving our kids that opportunity? Now, some students, they decide to go into school, they decide, I wanna go straight to college, they don't have college credit, so. They can come back if they want. Some may decide to go right to other professions. You know, and that's, that's fine. But why aren't we offering the opportunity? When someone asks, you know, they say, why is UW-SP doing this? And I said, I guess the question that Brian and I talked about, and Brian said it very succinctly. He said, the question is, that our focus is sustainability, why haven't we done this already? And why haven't we provided an opportunity to the schools in central Wisconsin? Not just up north in Madison, to have something like this right here?
And I think, you know, in everything that we're doing together and imagining, like students are at the center and heart of all of this. How can we, how can we best provide educational opportunities that don't currently exist in this community for the students within this community? How do we retain families? How do we retain students and still offer them like these opportunities that just currently aren't here? And we feel like this is this tool, this is this potential that can do this for all of our surrounding small communities in this area.
I think the easiest way to do that is for a public school too.
Or school district.
School, yeah.
District to say, hey, we're going to do this. And, and we, so we, we have some partnerships already with other school districts, right? Um, obviously, we've done something to have a grant with Granton and Pittsville that we've gotten, right? So they understand because they work with our school of education, that makes it easier because you work with UWSP, you know, we do, right? But, but this is a project now that has three of our schools for the university involved because they think this is a fantastic project to give to our kids in central Wisconsin.
So how many, so how, specifically how would it benefit like Pittsville students? Somebody asked us about this, how many college credits would, you know, the class would give?
So the objective and my thought process at the beginning, because I had one at my previous university where I worked, we had, uh, we had a school called the, uh, the York Early College Academy. And the early college academy allowed the kids to get up to the number of credits for an associate's degree. So you'd be able to, you have kids come out.
Associate's degree to graduate from Pittsville.
Absolutely. So you can come out.
You have an professor at UWSP. UWSP, yeah. You have associate's degree to graduate from Pittsville.
Absolutely.
And if you're still, and if you're a student here, you could still, you know, basketball.
Absolutely.
Yes, that's exactly.
That's the key to sure.
And that's, and that's a huge part is how do we make sure that that relationship stays strong for these students that are participating in this program and so they still have that high school experience.
Absolutely.
The dances and you know, right, all of these things that are important for those students.
So did you take any classes from college?
They, if they could, well, no, no, not in this program. They would be, this would be a school within a school.
Yeah, they would have the potential to take some classes with college students if they chose. There was specific courses that they were interested in, you know, in essence, in those two days that they have that autonomy, that can be used for taking college courses, for taking high school courses, right? So there's some autonomy there. But the courses that we're teaching, those like three days of face-to-face instruction, um, those are specifically just for these high school students.
It would be a cohort model, right? We have STEM classrooms and those kids would be in those classrooms for those days. If we had one classroom or two classrooms, those kids would travel together for two years.
Could you go to the next, um, the next slide? Because I think that may, um, answer a one school district.
Well, I think it's, it's helpful that you're hoping because I already have eight questions.
Oh, right, I'm still like, I mean, I don't see, like, I don't even know that we can get through all the questions that I have like, what this is.
Like, it's exciting, but I don't want to ask anything, but I'm afraid you're already going to cover it.
I hope so, yeah. So, you know, one of the benefits to the, just go ahead.
You know, actually, the next one's the one I'm looking at, the one.
I just wanted, I just had a.
Okay, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
I said, one of the benefits that we see to a district and becoming an authorizer is the opportunity to apply for grant funds. So, um, the federal government has charter school grant funds that states apply for. So the state just finished up the five-year grant rounds, they're currently on a year off because they applied for a new grant from the federal government, which they got, and that's a $58 million grant specifically for charter schools. Their goal is to fund 42 charter schools over the next five years in the state of Wisconsin with those grant dollars. And that's about a million dollars per school that, um, receives those grant funds. So, um, that would be a million dollars over the next five years that flows through the district, specifically going towards implementing this charter school. And so those grant dollars would go towards this next year of planning. So anyone that is, you know, involved in that planning process, those dollars can go towards those people. Potentially some would go towards people directly in your district, but it would also go towards UWSP Marshfield for those that are developing the curriculum. Um, and then it goes for stuff like that the school then owns and has. So a charter school has their own governance board that oversees that charter school. And so that's a relationship between their governance board and your board as a school district board authorizer. So that governance board ultimately has autonomy on how those grant dollars are spent, but because the school would be instrumentally in the district, the dollars flow through the district and the district supports in that. Um, but it's a wonderful opportunity to have money to plan a school. And so that's the hard thing about charter schools, right? It's like, you can have a great idea, but if there's not funding to make that idea come to life, it makes it a lot harder to start schools. And so that's why these grant funds exist, that's why the federal government has these funds, rather states, um, within the United States. And so this is an opportunity to take advantage of, of this funding.
I did want to point out specifically, as you said in the other weeks ago, advertising, those dollars that are in the stages can be used for advertising in charter school.
Yeah, so a lot of, the lot of the schools I work with, they'll send flyers to every single person in a 50-mile radius, right? Or put up billboards or do advertisements on the radio or commercials on TV, right? All those kinds of dollars can go towards all of those things, thank you, that's a great example. The grant dollars can't go towards educating the students. So once the doors open of the school, the general operating budget needs to come from that per pupil allotment funding. And so that's for the education of the students, the general, you know, oversight of the school, the administration. Those, you know, it will have an operating budget, just like any school within your district has an operating budget. And the school will need to live within that operating budget. And that's one of the responsibilities of that governance board of the charter school is to demonstrate to you their fiscal responsibility, um, that they're working within, within that budget. Okay, now we can go on.
Would you want questions about that governance committee now or would you want that saved until the end? This is great, thanks. So is there any overlaps or are there any school board members that would be also a part of the governance?
There can't be because no governance board members can be receiving any payment or be an employee in any capacity of the school district sets the authorizer. So no employee would you count as, um, can receive, can be on a governance board at the charter school.
So what is the, what's the relationship between them from the perspective of, kind of what I'm hearing you say, if we go the direction that as a district, we would be the district, right?
Yep, yep.
Um, sounds like it's a school, like, it's a school that we oversee, right? So, so what is that relationship between the school board's responsibility versus the governance's responsibility?
So that's exactly what the charter contract lays out, is exactly what that relationship looks like. Um, and you know, what are the responsibilities, who does what, like, what does the district provide, what is the school doing? So that's like all hashed out in that charter contract, that I would be there to support offering and help, and help lots of, of districts and charter schools offer it. But often, a representative from that, from that governance board and/or employee of the school, you know, whichever makes sense, would be here at every single one of the meetings, giving a report on what's going on with the school, you know, what's taking place that month, just like maybe you would receive from a principal at, at one of your other schools within the district. But then also you'll get like a very official annual report on the outcome. So, you know, any state testing that's taking place, internal assessments of the students', fiscal responsibility, right? All of those stats and statistics are shared with you as the authorizer. So it should be a very clear and consistent line of communication. I've definitely worked on many boards who have a district representative that attends every, um, um, governance board meeting. They can't be a voting member, but they're usually there in the room, can participate in the conversation, can be there to answer questions, and can be that, that, you know, conduit of communications between you and that board.
And that oversight piece comes in when this board would authorize, reauthorize the charter is where the oversight is. So if it was a point where we, the district, the board determined they weren't happy with the results that were being presented, then you just, when that ran out, you just.
Yeah, it, it, the charter contract will lay out.
To four years, but you could.
Well, and it could happen earlier, like, if the school is really not meeting the expectations of what's laid out in the charter contract, that contract can be broken if the school is not meeting the expectations that.
Of, of this board that requires us to have oversight this board.
And with that in view, courses, also would we be able to include or exclude certain courses we offer at that institution?
That all, that's that board.
The board, that, so that's what the charter contract, I mean, that's like why charter schools exist really is for that autonomy, right? It's autonomy or accountability. So because they get a autonomy over what that curriculum looks like and how they're implementing it, they have additional expectations, um, that they have to present to you as the authorizer in a different way than like a principal at one of your other schools. Um, they don't have that same level of accountability in presenting, you know, data and how the schools are doing and your option of closing a school if it's not meeting those expectations. But no, the, the school will have autonomy over the curriculum and how it's being implemented. Yeah.
The school, you say the school.
The charter.
The charter board.
Board. The charter school governance.
Governance board.
Yep.
It makes sense, the governance board.
Yeah, so whoever's interested in, in having that tool start. So one of the other schools I'm working with and what we would need to do is we apply for this grant as a new assessment within your community. And so that would be a survey that goes out to, you know, all the constituents, everyone in your community saying, hey, do you think this is a good idea? Do you have interest in having another schooling opportunity option for our 11th and 12th graders within our community? And so people will answer those questions. And the last question we always ask is, do you have interested, interest in being involved? And the last one I did in a small community, we got 17 people, we're like, yes, I want to be in that board, I want to help start that high school. Right, so there's good, you know, once the word's out, there's going to be people that want to be directly involved in that. And so it is a voted upon board, they will, um, they're incorporated, they usually apply for nonstop corporation, they have bylaws that they need to abide by. And usually the, the folks that vote that board in would be the families within that school community, in essence, are the members of that organization. So it's not like you where you're voted in by the entire community of Pittsville. It's just the school community and families that are participating. So the other just little tidbit that I want to add too is, students that are attending the school need, need to apply to that school specifically and there's a random lottery process for those students to get in. So unlike a private school where you can pick and choose which students are attending the school, this is a public school, just like one of your schools, but it has a limited number of seats, um, for participation. And so if there's more applicants than spots available, a random lottery takes place. And so the students who are drawn in that lottery have the students that get a spot. Once they have a spot, they get to retain that spot until they graduate the school. So they wouldn't go in a lottery again for 12th grade if they got in at 11th grade. And then there's also just like a couple of opportunities for priority in that lottery process. One is if they have a sibling already in the school, the next sibling would have some priority. And then governance board members and staff members, children can make up 10% of the population of the school. And these are federal laws, so that is the same for every single charter school across the United States. So the only priority.
You would be limited in numbers then upon the students getting talent.
Right, you know, unless the program is, you know, is able to grow through UWSP Marshfield, then they're like, yeah, we, we could grow beyond 100. Right now the vision is like, we could do this for 100 kids and so that cap would be set and that there always is the opportunity to expand that cap.
Do we have any idea what a number for our school district might have?
Well, a hundred, ultimately of you.
No, I think you mean, Chris, you asked them much specifically, how many schools, what, how many kids?
Students, do you foresee that would affect?
As many as want to, if there's space.
So we could sponsor something. We could sponsor something in our, our community as much as not the community.
Correct. If we, if we let people open and roll in. Well, you can't not let people open and roll. I mean, you're.
Do you get what they're asking? They're saying, so if, if it was capped, so let's say, so we have 40, 40 kids in a class, we have a total of 88 students that would be eligible for this option. Right, Julia, sitting here in our district is, what if there were three students? So we authorize this and three students from Pittsville said, I want this, then go into a lottery for this and in some scenario could be excluded from, from participating. Do you see what?
Yeah, every charter school is like that, there's going to be kids that don't fit in. Almost every charter school I work with goes into lottery. And it's, the, those are the hardest meetings you ever have because there are going to be kids that don't fit in. But the open enrollment for district kids, it's all people when it comes to that.
Tony, where does this fall? Like, again, I think it's on the urgent, I think, for tonight, to approve slots of open enrollment.
Yeah, that's the special education.
No, it's for all.
It's for all grade levels, follow our open enrollment limits.
So would this include? So. We don't know yet.
We don't know.
Because, because we have to go through the plan.
And this is, this is not until the 24, 20, this is for another school year, so the limits are probably.
Yes, I mean, you as a district, this is one of the schools in your district, so yes, you would have authority and autonomy. I've always seen districts decline open enrollment students because of special education because you can set special ed limits or open enrollment limits.
Yeah, or we could do.
Expose, right, things like that, yeah.
But as, I guess my question would be, is for 11th and 12th grade, five years into this or four years into this, when we can have 100, if we know 10 of our students are interested, could we only allow 90 to open enroll?
I don't know, I've never, I don't know.
Interesting question.
Yeah, I.
Well, I think it's an important question from the perspective of, I mean, that's just one component, right? Like, there's a lot to think about with this, but I think it's important to know if we would, that's how we can prioritize our students, right? Is by only allowing the, like, then there would never be a lottery, right?
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I would have to do more digging in that because what we have to do right now, we have proven by grade level right now specifically. And, and I don't know if there's a special caveat related to charter schools where that would, because that would be very difficult to, to set your open enrollment limits based upon the variable that it would be a charter school though.
No, you can definitely set your open enrollment by school.
But within your grade levels, like we're doing now, so like, we have numbers for, we will take, we have 10 spots in second grade. It, it, to me, it wouldn't be as simplistic as saying, okay, hold on, we could blow our open enrollment limits with this charter school in grades 11 and 12. I can't imagine that this would be a, something that folks a lot smarter than me haven't thought of, that that would be unreasonable for us to try to project what that might look like. This is like a third school. Yes, that's what I'm saying, I, I think that would be its own entity. And Julie, are you asking then, could you set limits within that entity?
Right, right, so within that entity, could we approve that if there's 100 slots in four years and we know 10 of our students want to in because we set up something to ask?
Yes.
That the board approves 90 slots of open enrollment so that we don't, now, granted, that would mean that not necessarily a student mid-year or whatever, but like for that year, we've done our best to assure, I mean, we want all 90 of them to come because you would get the funding and that would cost more than.
That's the other thing, front of law for the school.
Well, that's not even priority though. That, would that, this is a question specifically about open enrollment, which is the state law. So that doesn't have anything to do with front of law.
It would never go to lottery, it would never go to lottery because we wouldn't allow, I mean, we don't have that.
Well, it would still potentially go to lottery, more than 90 students apply for open enrollment.
Yeah, we wouldn't allow more than 90 to open enroll.
But we could have 20 from Pittsville then that decided to come instead of the 10.
Well, you would have to give a deadline of.
With our students, we have to take that 10 to the wall.
What some, this, what some schools do, and this is like coming at it from a slightly different angle, is we'll do, you can have multiple enrollment windows. And what some schools do is have like, an enrollment window that's only advertised to their in-district students and then like a well-advertised enrollment window to the rest of the wider community.
That makes sense.
And that's a way to potentially, um, secure spots. The other thing that very occasionally happens is you can get a waiver, um, for priority from the state if you can prove to them why a rising student out of your 10th grade would need priority into this charter school. That's usually from one charter school similar program to another charter school similar program. Like, for instance, I started in elementary and middle school and we wanted to make sure that those elementary students were able to go into that middle school that had that exact same programming. We got a state waiver for that. So I mean, there is, I would say this is like a down-the-road problem that we want to have. Like, I would love, like, I, I'm excited for the day when we have more than 100 students wanting to attend a school and we need to figure out how to make sure that we can get priority. I feel like there's always a way, you know?
Well, in the open enrollment camp, I think what it is.
Seems like a logical one.
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't know what the rules are.
I think that, yeah, well, I don't know the answer either, but, you know, I think that there are tools at our disposal to support, um, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think we can.
Yeah, I just, I, I do want to do a bit of a time check.
Yeah. And so, um, I don't think I need to go into the second. And so um I don't think I need to go into the second presentation that really talks a lot more about STEM and PDL. I think in the future, if you want to learn more about that style of curriculum, we can go into that. But I think this bigger picture of like, what could it look like for your districts are the right questions to be asking. You know, this is kind of the final thing, is that if we don't have the district that really wants to take this on, the other option is to do an independent charter school through UW um Marshall, and they would be the authorizer of the charter school. This is our least favorite option, because then you would lose, right, those students.
Would lose.
There'd be disletting some.
And that was your initial conversation.
And we don't want that.
That was exactly.
Like, we want to provide this, but we don't want it to be for students, right? We want to figure out how you retain the money for your students, and we can support programming.
And so.
And how we can get more students.
Yes.
Yes.
And how you can get more students. So all of those things, like, that's how we would think for it to happen. What we can help and support by providing is grant writing for this grant that is due in the middle of February. We can support um helping in um doing that community survey, which we would need for that grant, um that's part of a requirement for that grant application. We would support in authoring and writing your charter contract. I would can support in the developments of your governance board, I work with governance boards across the state of Wisconsin, you know, and helping write bylaws and bringing that group together and teaching them how to be a board, right, all of those things. And those that funding that would come from that grant can support all of that work that's taking place. And so, you know, we want to be here as a partner and a support system to you as a potential district authorizer. And, you know, fill in any gaps that exist, be here to answer any questions that you might have. But the the kind of the ask and the request tonight is, do you have interest? Um, and if so, there needs to be a declaration of that interest so that we could move forward in writing a grant application. So there needs to be an uh an interest by an authorizer on record to be able to write a grant application for a school.
And does that interest come with, if you receive it, we have to? And the only reason I ask that, I mean, we wouldn't say we had interest if we weren't interested.
Yeah.
But I I do have a list of ten questions we haven't gotten to, and I don't think we're going to get to those tonight, and I think it's like another two or three hour meeting just about this topic. So if that can happen during all of that process, I feel different about authorizing us to, I mean, I I s- I hear the tight timeline.
Yeah.
And I want to be respectful of, like, there's at least my personal interest, there's enough interest to, yes, want to talk a lot more about this, but not, but I I also want to be super respectful that there's a whole lot of questions and um which could mean we move forward, or could mean something's a deal breaker. I don't think so, but I don't know.
You can say yes now, we can write a grant application between now and when we find out about that grant application, isn't until Ju- um June. So, I mean, there's lots of times for meetings in between now and June, and we could always then decline a grant if it was approved. And you decided not to move forward. In that planning year, you could change your minds and like not do a charter contract. I don't believe you have to return those funds, but you don't obviously get any more funds coming forward. But you can't apply for a grant with you as an authorizer and then change authorizers. That grant is null and void if you are no longer the authorizer of that charter school. The charter school really needs to exist as the grant is presented, or that grant funding doesn't exist anymore. Is that, yeah, so, and I, yeah, I mean, I completely respect that. We don't want to like rush or push anyone into anything that I'm comfortable doing. But do acknowledge that this is, again, we're just like, we're all at the beginning, and we'll have like all of this time to hopefully, you know, answer all the questions that exist, figure out all those minute details that are going to make this program the best program that it can possibly be. Um, and do many more, you know, educational informational sessions so that you as a board really understand your your responsibility as an authorizer. And that will really come to light too, as we discuss and create this um charter contract between you and the board. And so, you know, there's, we have a year and a half for all those details to. But if you, if, we don't want to miss out on the funds for planning year. To not have funding for a planning year is going to make it much harder or impossible for this project to move forward. Um, that funding for a planning year is really instrumental in being able to develop and hire the professionals to develop a curriculum that we know is so important for this this program to be successful.
And to be candid, there are a few school districts, a couple, you know, that would say, hey, we'll come on board maybe next year after the planning year. Maybe we don't want to be a part of the planning year, so we won't be able to get the grant money for that. We'd be fine, as Cam Camaro said, he said, we may just decide to opt in and be a part of whoever authorizes it. Because they they've said, hey, well, that's for sure, but planning, well, that's sure ready to be part of this, but we do think it's a great idea. We might want to come on board and receive the grant money for the next five years after the planning is done. Every unique opportunity to be the group that shapes this whole thing, that puts it all together, receives the money authorizes, brings the money into and the kids into the district. And to be very candid, we do have witnesses over everybody. We still have two other school districts that have reached out to you today, who said, we want to meet to assess this idea. Um, and to talk to you about it, because we're interested.
Do they ever send out a survey, the the governance board, to these schools, like, what kind of topics might interest your school?
Yep, if that's exactly what this needs assessment would include, it would be a bunch of like, I'll.
I have a sample that you shared with me that I could share with the board.
Yeah, so Jason shared.
It's a draft for us to, we could actually.
That that's.
That's pretty.
I don't have my other questions, but like, my my biggest one I'm thinking of right now is, it keeps saying this is going to be less more students. But if thirty students open enroll from somewhere else for this, doesn't the money just stay in this program? Doesn't like come and put light bulbs in our school here?
No, but, I mean, there are, you will keep a portion of the funding for everyone of those students for administrative costs to support the district, to support the district authorizing and overseeing the charter.
The line would have cost, couldn't it?
Totally, there's cost, yes, it's just, it's.
This would offset that cost.
If you receive a cost, you're twenty percent of this, say, two hundred thousand dollars a year for admission costs. And a part of it comes to us, even if only half comes to us, the other ten percent stays in the district. For two hundred thousand dollars a year for the five year grant. That makes sense.
Oh, for the grant, but, so when a student rolls in, when a student open enrolls in, how much funding do we get for that?
We get one point.
It's probably five hundred right now for non special education, not IP.
Eighty five.
And it looks like in this, it'll cost sixty five hundred. And that's also part of like the discussion that we're having. So our our thought is that it's sixty forty. So sixty percent of whatever that funding is comes.
Cause they're at campus, at three days a week.
Three days a week.
Sixty percent of the time, it's going to be.
Four eighty percent, right, because.
Because if a hundred students are part of that, the other piece is that those hundred students could end up being in our buildings two days a week.
Well, if, when you look at the project, we're funding, we we would have control, or like, some may want to take band choir classes.
They're not just going to be here.
And some may be after doing individual projects.
And we're responsible for the students, all of the days of the week. If those students want to participate in programming here, like a class or something, that would be a conversation we have with your principal or something like that, that you have to have.
And we have open classes, we have the.
But they're not just going to be roaming their hallways, they're not here those two days.
Oh, man.
Those two days a week, they have autonomy over where they're at. So we we determine that autonomy, right? That's through, you know, their advisor determining, are they taking a college class, are they doing work study? Are they taking a band class or whatever it might be? We're still responsible for them, it's just not face to face instruction for those hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this five year grant of of two hundred thousand, approximately.
Each year.
Each year.
Each year.
Yeah.
Um, if we had from our students, maybe about twenty five, thirty students covered at two hundred thousand.
Oh, I'm confused by that question.
The two hundred thousand is not for student education, it can be used for.
Okay, what what is the two hundred thousand for?
Developing a school, yeah, that's planning a school. So one of the first years is planning, and then the second four years is implementation.
Let me ask this, because I think maybe this is where Nate goes wrong with this too. So hypothetically play this out, and I I think you addressed it when you said like, it's not like the kids are just going to be enrollment in the halls of Pittsville or our, you know, the pit, two days a week. What obligations would we have for staffing as the school district? That costs.
Is that the question?
Well, I have a lot of, like, my big question is, how does this not cost us more money? If we can't afford what we're doing now for a lot of things, I guess it's a great opportunity, but what does it cost us? That's right, like, this two hundred thousand dollar grant, that's not coming to us, that's coming to finding the school.
Yeah.
You know, and so that is like our, one of our biggest concerns here. Like, I want, I want the world for our kids, you know? I want to take my kids to Disney World through that damn board, this is, we can't do all this stuff. I'm sure it's not costing us money.
And and honestly, a piece, which is why I'm asking, like, like, one of the requirements I would need to say, to sign the line to say, to do it, is a whole breakdown of what does it look like for twenty of our students to choose this option? And another, we, you know, we project here one twenty to open enroll, then thirty to open enroll, like, how does that all break down? And how does that fit within, you know, we only have graduating classes of forty to forty five students? I am all about this, like, I actually couldn't be more about, like, needing to look at the educational system, looking different, and kind of what that looks like. But I also am very much around the complete plan of what that looks like and what impact. Because it could, and and maybe it's not a bad idea, but it could gut out not us not having juniors and seniors in our school. Or very few, because we don't have that many. Um, so what happens if twenty of our forty students want this? Which could be really cool. Can, what does it look like for us to educate twenty instead of forty on campus? Like, what what do all of those things look like? And how does that fit into us assuring that we're also keeping the doors open for everything that we need? And again, so those, but that could, that that isn't have to be answered by, you know, nine o'clock tonight. That's like, that's.
Can I touch on that though, just, I want I want to share a thought, is uh this is an option that is not going to be for everyone, it is an additional option for the school environment. I would say by experience with having explored charter schools in depth at my previous district when we were exploring option, you're not going to see, that would be atypical to see fifty percent of a class choose that option. The other thing I would say is, this is why this resonated with me in the Tonian in that last year. Here's what the reality is, that should be very telling if fifty percent of our students wanted to choose this option. And even if we don't sign on, they're going to want a charter, there's going to be a charter school. And then what I'm going to tell you is, if it was that intriguing to these twenty students, they're going to go regardless, and they're going to take this option, and then we're going to lose all enrollment opportunities. I I don't want to sound like, I'm just saying, that's just a fact, is why this was something I wanted to explore as a district, because it it it's coming, it's going to come to the area one way or another, and and I feel like it, it's an opportunity for students, is it one that I think is going to ravage our enrollment in our traditional and despite, but no, I absolutely do not right now. I think for some students, I think it absolutely will fit a need. Um, and I think it checks that box of solidifying, um, you know, some enrollment down the road here, albeit in a school within our school, but yeah, that would be two thoughts.
I would like to bring this back to the agenda. And the agenda item um is, let me bring up the correct agenda. Um, there is a suggestion for a motion to move forward with initiating a charter high school application, the um actual planning grant, that the five year planning grant. Um, I I would like to see some action on that motion tonight, either for or against. Um, I also think that while the application is due in February.
Sixteenth or fifteenth.
Something like that.
February eighteen, eighteen before you first changed it.
Okay. Okay, there is, there is, I'm just throwing this out here, I realize that we don't, we included the extra meetings. But we could authorize the beginning of writing this. And then reconvene in a special meeting that is specific to this topic to answer all those questions.
And I have sample budgets from many charter schools that I've worked with, I think that would answer some of these budget questions that you're having. What are the district's responsibilities, how does that money flow, what's leaving, what's staying? And I think we're not proposing this as a money maker. But it's also should never cost your district money. That is ultimately the responsibility and will be stated in the charter contract, that this school will not cost your district money. But it will bring students to your district, it will bring potentially new families to your district that have students that not only would be participating in this high school, but potentially have students that are participating in other.
The elementary school.
Exactly, right, right? And so schools that I work with have seen a lot of this, you create something amazing. You are going to bring new families and excitement and all of those things that you want, love of your school and what it's offering to your community. So, I mean, I'll bring it back to like what I said before, like, if the kids are at the heart of your decision, then making sure that there's educational opportunities within your community should be part of that picture that you're presenting. But of course, I was being physically responsible, and not saying that that isn't also your responsibility.
So one question about what we might be or not, might, what we might be approving tonight. If we approved, um, being the authorizer of the grant, um, are we approving being the singular authorizer? Or are there other districts that are still having conversations, and so if we approve, it could be multiple districts being the authorizer?
Each one could actually, and I like Cam here, this is, but each one could actually authorize our own school year. Conceivably, it could go that way, a few different options, that you would be authorizing your own charter school year.
Okay. And you might, if other districts have interest, you might apply for multiple grants?
That is conceivable, there may be a multiple grants being proposed.
Okay. So that that there's a lot of moving parts here.
So what happens if we don't approve this tonight? We like just lose all chances, or I don't, is we, there's like.
The key is the deadline for the grant.
I mean, to say I have eight questions, I've got a hundred questions.
Well, I just wrote down. So, um, obviously, it's difficult to make a final decision today. Um, I'm going to throw out a number of, and and I really want us to focus on how we're going to move forward. I don't want any, just write down your questions, not the operational things, and let's just focus on what are we going to do tonight? We could make, we could move to move forward with applying for a funding application. Okay? We could table this and have a special meeting to answer questions. We could move forward with moving to apply. And then after that, have a special meeting and potentially put the kibosh on it. I, what I think I hear you asking for, if you want to get, oh, you want to get cracking on that.
I can't write this level of grant application in two weeks.
Right.
For one of the reasons is we need to do a needs assessment of the community, which I think also will answer questions that you might have of like, what is the interest? Do we want to move forward with this? So that would be one of those pieces that could be answered, so I would. Yeah, we need, if a grant's going to be written, that part needs to start. You can delay the decision, like the other decision of do, are we interested in starting the school till February, or whenever a special meeting happens? But the decision to like, yes, let's start writing a grant tonight would be the night to make that, yeah.
There is everything about it, we hired the consultant, it costs you nothing to do that.
So, but if we offer, if we offer as a grant writing, we need to use for the services, like, you, we're all.
Right, right.
And it could even be longer than two weeks, it could be a lot of, what you've indicated is just for the planning and implementation. At that point, this is simply to move forward with applying for that, potentially that million dollars, with the funding to plan and roll things out for eighteen months from now.
So, once again, I'd like to focus on action tonight. What is the board's?
I just wanted to make sure that we all understand what the action means.
So, I think the proposal from Mary Ann for the action is to move forward with starting the grant application. You as a board would still, between now and when that grant is submitted, need to have a determination that you are interested in having a charter high school in your district. You are not, that motion is not on the table for tonight, which is my understanding. Just the motion to begin the process of. Just the motion to begin the process of the grant application, which includes a needs assessment for your community.
Which is gonna help you decide because the community will set you up the needs in the survey.
Always.
Always.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve me moving forward with initiating the grant writing process.
And the needs assessment, I think we should have that on the agenda.
And the needs assessment. I'll buy a special meeting of the board prior to our regularly scheduled February meeting, where this is the only agenda item. Would anyone like to make that motion? Or can I make that motion? As a board president? Okay, I so moved what I just said. Got that down? Okay, that we would move forward with initiating the funding application, including the needs assessments. And we will have a special meeting with the board prior to our regularly scheduled meeting on February twelve.
We'll coordinate with you guys too.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion. And what I'm understanding, it's a great opportunity. And if it doesn't cost us anything, yeah. I'll second the motion.
Are there any other questions about the motion?
We'll just be setting the date later.
I would say we need to set a date probably under, let's have last, I didn't realize the other item. Future agenda items. Let's set a date at that point.
I would rather move to the end of the year.
Okay. Okay.
If you mean close session.
Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's why I said anything. Well, I think that a huge part is getting your questions, right? There might even be some F A teams out there that answer some of the questions.
I will collect your questions.
And if you haven't seen the presentation on practical-based learning, you should.
The second PowerPoint down to your side. So those kinds of resources are at the charter schools because a website that is just filled with information. If you go to the authorizer tab, it has a whole bunch of resources that might answer some of your questions about authorizing. But I'm also very excited for such a meeting and to answer as many questions as I have.
That's awesome. Well, and, and the beauty will be that it will be a public meeting. And so all of our community is going to see some needs assessments that we're going to be sharing with them with the thousand questions they have. This is for you to give us an input and there's gonna be a meeting and you should come and listen too, right? I mean, so it'll give that opportunity for.
Listen, this is something that UWASP has never done before, right?
Yeah.
And this is a big risk for us also. We're not making anything on this. So when you talk about the fact that you say, hey, well, so we're making anything, so we're losing money. If we're, if we're breaking even on this, we're not breaking even. Because then we have administrators such as myself, I facilitate people. Everybody else is gonna have to donate at least twenty to thirty percent of their time working to get this charter school up and running and, and operation. And those kids are gonna be there every day, whether they're eating or whether they're traveling back and forth. We're gonna have to make sure we clean up here, those kids, we're gonna show them everything. All of those things, that's gonna mean that we're gonna lose money with this thing. And we know we will because we have other things that are gonna cost the, the UW system. But we are really, really excited about the fact that we can bring something like this to central Wisconsin. Madison's early and focused on freshwater and getting their kids involved at an early age. We're not doing that. We've got college kids involved at senior and junior level. We're not talking about high school kids. We got kids, an opportunity we're giving them to get involved with something like this, sort of focused on freshwater, a high school age, and a burning college grants. That's why we're in this. And that's why we've decided to take an opportunity and take a risk to get involved in some of the local schools to do something like this. But it's a huge risk on our part also. So we understand your concern, interpretation. Because we are the same, same interpretation. First time we're doing something like this.
It's about serving a community.
No. Well, if you've seen the schools floating around in the UW system, you realize they're all, you know, in situations where we're trying to make sure that we don't go on the whole, any of them.
Right. It's meeting the needs of the community.
It is, absolutely.
And that's what we're about.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for letting us.
Tip travels.
Ah, thank you very much.
Yes, I think I got, I'll follow him.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
I really don't know.
Move along to the next agenda item, which is the district calendars.
So this will be short and sweet here. I just wanted to give the board an overview. If you recall, last year we met as a calendar committee and brought a proposal, several calendars forward. We had a couple of different options available for the board review for approval. The proposal for this year is to approve both the twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. Do two years with the calendars approval. My understanding is that used to take place, I don't know when it stopped. And that's pretty common in most school districts, honestly, is to bring two calendars forward. So what we're doing is, is in the next, I, I had Deb send an email out to staff. Deb, how many folks did we have?
Possibly nine.
We had nine staff members indicate they're interested in being on the calendar committee. That would meet as early as next week. We are then going to bring two calendars to the board in February for review, for approval. I will tell you this, the same thing I said last year with the, we're not gonna resurvey the community and the staff because it was pretty clear with the survey is, is that they wanted to, as far as Memorial Day, Labor Day dates, those were pretty much installed, that people supported that and wanted to continue that. And you may remember from last year, what that does is that hamstrings us as far as flexibility within the schedule. That puts you on a pretty tight window. So there's honestly not gonna be anything radical coming forward in the calendars. The biggest feat to consider is, and my proposal is going to be, and we've kind of discussed this, is do we continue the Wednesday early release for P L C time? And, and my proposal is, is that we would continue that work. I think we've seen significant progress in the last two years with work being done during that time and many of our district goals that we're working towards, that work is instrumental that's taking place during that P L C time. That would be the biggest piece of this. Other than that, it's gonna be the same, same number of staff days, student days. It's just where we put them and do we have the full spring break, which was overwhelmingly positive. Feedback was, yes, have a full week's spring break. So I will, once the committee drafts those, I will get copies to the board, the draft copies as soon as the proposals come forward.
Okay, thank you, Jason. The next item is the W A S B delegate assembly resolution, resolution chance.
Okay, okay. Different school boards throughout the state turned in a total of eleven different proposals. Two of them were combined into one because they're very similar in nature and two were turned down. One was turned down because the community felt that it had been considered last year and that it didn't merit consideration at this time. That was one for free lunches for all. The other one that was turned down was, they felt it could be more of an issue for the W I A A to deal with instead of school boards getting involved. And that was to determine athletes and student eligibility. So that was a resolution in preventing biological males competing in all male, all females sports. Those two were turned down and they will not be there. The seven, there were seven resolutions brought up by member districts that will be voted on. And there were four resolutions being proposed by W A S P. None of them are going to create any long discussions, I don't think, at the convention night. I think they're all pretty clear cut. I have them all down. If we wanna go through them one at a time and decide how we feel about it, is that the steps you wanna take?
That was, is this a quick synopsis or?
That's the cool thing. They wrote them in this fifteen page, yeah? But, but they did shorten it to a nice condensed version. First one, W A S P would like to help with student teachers and interns. They support revising post-secondary student teaching programs and internships. They want more consistency, accessibility, and they want to incentivize talent development across the state, which may include year-round licensures, waiver fees and the pain of stipends. This is mostly for interns. Wisconsin has a, as we all know, and this has come up a few times, an extreme teaching shortage which jeopardizes the ability of all districts to provide high-quality education through well-trained, available staff, as well to fill specialty and substitute teaching needs. Targeting the teaching pipeline, removing barriers and offering creative incentives, such as paying for student teaching, flexibility and internship licensure for districts and the ability for educational candidates to substitute teach are all part of addressing this challenge. Currently, I guess interns are not, they are strictly interns. Later on, we can still have the next one. And they are paid differently by all the districts. Every district pays an intern differently. This is gonna put a little more consistency into internship. It's going to allow a district to apply for an intern all the way up till when school starts instead of having to have the applications there by first of August.
That actually almost bit us last year is that we had to call the D P I and we got Jim Johnson actually gave us, they, they made a waiver for us. We missed the deadline and it was because we didn't have a vacancy with the deadline exposed. So I would tell you, any of these that are, that are supporting like enhancing our ability to cooperate teachers, I would strongly support as far as any of these that are addressing the teacher shortage too, yeah?
I would.
Resolution one seems pretty easy. It's gonna help our district.
Yeah, I think one is fine and I don't see any fiscal costs with it. Two, my only question is who's paying? So are we, are we approving something that adds fiscal?
That they have stipends right now actually for student teachers available.
Right, are they proposing?
This is super impressive.
Can I take a step, can I take a step back on all of these? The idea behind these resolutions, they're not legislation. They are to provide policy guidance to the W A S B staff. So when bills get introduced, they can go to their book and, and look at that policy guidance. So really to answer your question, Julie, you know, who would pay for stipends? Well, we don't know at this point in time. It's just, you know, it supports creation of a program. And once an, an actual bill is introduced and the W A S B can, if a bill is introduced, the W A S B people can say, you know, we support the creation of a stipend program. When it comes to the actual details, that's, that's legislative. And when there's a hearing on the bill, we all have an opportunity to weigh in on that and to make changes for what the author comes up with. So these things are policy guidance. They're not proposed legislation. Personally, I see all of them as positive policy guidance. And I think it would be appropriate to vote yes on all of them.
Now, do you see that on the board that was being put in two or the seven, the school board?
Um, okay, W A S B, and this was something that they didn't get to last year because we, it went on forever and ever and we lost the form. The policy guidance book, they went through a comprehensive review of it. And what they really are proposing in these four staff-generated resolutions is updating language. And so it's really not anything new. It's more updating it based on how things have changed, how bills have been signed into law. They get rid of obsolete language. And personally, I trust the government relations staff to be very thorough in looking at something from that updated perspective. Just like I trust Deb providing policy revisions as things change.
For what it's worth, from my lens as the district administrator, none of these were, these all, they made educational sense and they made sense specifically for the district looking at through that lens.
For example, I would look at the bottom of number six, resolution twenty-four dash eleven related to licensure. You know, they're, they're indicating the things to repeal. And then the recreation, what I see is more, what can I say, succinct and more relevant, related to issues that we have going on right now. They haven't really changed any policies or policy guidance. It's just they've updated language.
I think they're trying also to, try to figure out ways to help with the teaching shortage. I don't know if any of these will help, but at least they're attempts.
Well, again, they're policy guidance. So when the legislature introduces bills, this provides guidance on how W A S B, the position that they're going to take. What's written here is not in and of itself going to help the teacher shortage. It's more, this is how the, the association, this is their principles, their policy principles. I feel like I'm repeating myself because I am.
What do you mean by that, Mary?
I just need you to okay, I see all these myself as, who are vote positive. If anyone has a problem with any of that, I wanna know because I have a-
I can support all the positive on all. I think the only one I had in common town is I feel like number two supports will potentially cost money of which anytime you support something that increases your cost without knowing where it's coming from, I have a slight reservation. I don't think it's a bad idea. I just, like, why would I want to? And we still might want to do that, but why would I want to approve something that someone else is putting additional rules around it? But I don't oppose it enough that you can't vote yes.
Yeah.
But that's the only one in all of them that I just feel like it looks a little unfunded man baby potentially.
For context, right now, the university system pays a hundred dollars to any lower cooperating, if you're a cooperating teacher, they will send you a check and honor you with a hundred dollars is what, what they get for, for doing that from the university. And it comes to the tuition of the teacher. It's actually part of their tuition.
Right, and I see this and I think, gosh, if we prioritize that, we can put something in place. This is proposing that someone else puts in place what that looks like and doesn't tell me if they're actually going to give us the money to actually pay for it. Well, right, so that was my only potential slight comment on that one. Well, right, so that was my only potential slight comment on that one. But I don't oppose it enough that you can't vote yes because of the exact reasons of there's like eighteen more steps before that would ever even take place.
Yeah.
Good way to put it.
So, by my own.
Thanks.
Okay, perfect.
Good deal, good deal. Okay, let's go on to Agenda Item Number 11, Discussion and Action Items, Open Enrollment and a bunch of policies. So Jason, can you review with us the open enrollment space availability recommendations?
Yeah, so these are set by Mr. Sherwood and the principals. They go through and analyze current class numbers and then determine how many potential spaces we could accept students without having dramatic impact on our class sizes. You know, you're familiar with AGR limits of eighteen in the primary grades, but we are able to exceed those limits based upon having an instructional coach and reading interventions available. You're able to exceed those, but good practices, you don't want to exceed those significantly. These are very similar to last year's numbers. I think we're a little bit lower in eleventh and tenth grade. Dr. Watson had said in eleventh grade, looking at what those classes taken by students in those grade levels, we would be on the cusp of any more than three at that grade level. We would potentially look at having create extra sections of those high school courses. Here's the conundrum for the board. This is a bit of a guesstimate. On our part, we have to estimate and of course, as a district who is stable to slightly decline in enrollment, we certainly do not want to cut off our nose despite our face by turning students away. So we felt like these are comfortable limits where we can accept open enrollment requests without jeopardizing the educational offering that we present to our existing students, resident students. The special education numbers, those are based specifically on services that we can provide. So, and I know to some people that may seem like, wow, how could we? It turned out it would be if we had students like we have, we pay for speech and language services. We need to make sure we're servicing our students that require speech and language services within our district. If we had several students coming in, the first thing we'd do is check and see do we have available space to meet those needs for a student with an IEP. So that's why the special education applications are treated separately. I am happy to say, last year, we accepted all open enrollment and requests, special education and the general education, because we were able to meet the needs of the students. So that's why you see those lines.
Bingo. This is broken down into two motions. One for general education and the other for special education.
I'll make a motion to approve the following number of spaces available for the open enrollment in regular education classrooms for the 2024-2025 school year. 4K 10 spaces, kindergarten 10 spaces, first grade 10 spaces, second grade 10 spaces, third grade 10 spaces, fourth grade 10 spaces, fifth grade 10 spaces, sixth grade 10 spaces, seventh grade 10 spaces, eighth grade 10 spaces, ninth grade 7 spaces, 10th grade 5 spaces, 11th grade 3 spaces, 12th grade 12 spaces.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the spaces as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
And I'll make a motion to approve the following number of spaces available for open enrollment in special education services for the 2024-2025 school year. Speech and language in 4K through 12, one space. And the following spaces available for ID and EBD services in early childhood through grade two, two spaces. Grade three through five, one space. Grade six through eight, one space. Grade nine through 12, three spaces.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the open enrollment spaces for special education as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Let's take a look at the policies. We have the second reading of a number of policies. First of all, Policy 112.1, Strategic Planning. Do I have any questions or can I have a motion to accept and approve?
I'll make a motion to accept and approve 112.1.
All in favor? Oops, I'm sorry, seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve Policy 112.1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Second reading and approval of updates to Policy 120, School District Legal Status.
I'll make a motion to approve Policy 120.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Policy 120. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Second reading and approval of the updates to Policy 132, Board Member Resignation or Removal from Office.
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to Policy 132.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve updates to Policy 132. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Approval of updates to Policy 150, formerly 151, Board Governance.
I think a motion to approve the updates to Policy 150.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updates to Policy 150. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Second reading and approval of updates to Policy 151, which was formerly Policy 152, Word Policy Adoption and Review.
I'll make a motion to accept Policy 151.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updates to Policy 151. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. The second reading and approval of updates to Policy 343.4, Exhibit, Parent Barrier Notice of Educational Options.
I'll make a motion to approve Policy 343.4, Exhibit.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve updates to Policy 343.4, Exhibit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Second reading and approval of Policy 661.1, Electronic Transfer of Funds.
I'll make a motion to approve Policy 661.1.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve new policy 661.1, Electronic Transfer of Funds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Second reading and approval of new policy 661.2, Rule, Outstanding Checks.
I actually have a question about this one.
Oh, great.
Is it our policy, do we have? When we issue checks, does it have like must be cashed within ninety days or like is it sixty? Okay, so I just wonder how that interfaces with what this says.
By statute, we have to do the five-year unclaimed funds. And we haven't had anything in policy for outstanding checks. I think we've had a procedure I followed since Jeff, but we haven't had a policy for it. And we're coming up on five-year for some of our unclaimed property ones.
Any other questions?
But I still don't understand, like, I don't know, like, I'm just making sure that this policy aligns with our practice. So it's ninety, you said ninety days?
Sixty.
So sixty days. So my question is, you'll identify, contact the payee in effort to notify the outstanding matter and bring prompt processing of the check, right? That would be the person getting the check, does that read? And that's after four months, but the checks already, like, I'm just.
Quite honestly, a lot of the checks are still being cashed.
Oh.
A lot of them, they don't honestly look at that sixty day very closely. So a lot of them are getting cashed, but I do have checks that are, it's old as, um, 2015, 16, that I need to get rid of.
And they need to go to the unclaimed property?
Yes, they do, but without a policy, I can't believe. So I need a policy to get those unclaimed properties. Because I, once a year, I will send like official letters to everybody. Staff, I kind of remind them, you know, hey, I see you haven't cashed this check and could you please try and do so?
So by approving this policy rule, you will be able to then move things that are older than five years to the, I think it's the DFI, Department of Financial Institutions Unclaimed Property.
It's actually, I think it's Wisconsin Department of Revenue.
Or Revenue Department.
Yes, it allows me to do that and if they're doing so, I can also, the financial presentation of outstanding checks is a liability. And I don't have them recorded that way either because we don't have a policy.
So this policy will enable you to do your job.
Right, right. I mean, I've been doing it a lot, this just makes it, you know, feel official a little bit and it will allow me to do that, I think it says, I don't have it with me, I did no idea that for a second reading, but that is something in regards to processing the inventory. For something to move it to a liability, I believe that's in that language someplace. And I haven't been able to do that, it's just sitting out there, it's, you know, outstanding checks, yeah, but they're years old.
So I'll make a motion to accept and approve new policy 661.2, Outstanding Checks.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the new policy 661.2, Rule. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Approval of updates to Policy 672, The Authority to Make Purchases and Tentative into Procurement Contracts. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to Policy 672. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updates to Policy 672. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Second reading and approval of updates to Policy 672.1, Procurement Methods for Services, Supplies, Equipment, Other Property. Are there any questions? Then I'm going to enter a motion to approve the update.
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to Policy 672.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updates to Policy 672.1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. We have a first reading of Policy 632, Short-Term Borrowing. Are there any questions about this policy?
Is this new? Is it, like, it's not highlighted, so is this just all brand new and we didn't have one before?
Yes.
So we could borrow without having a policy before?
As far as I know, we've never been short-term borrowing.
This is to allow us to.
Well, we had to in the past.
Yes, we did.
Or we should, as I started.
But it's, yeah, that was ancient history, but yeah. We did in the past.
We did without policy.
Why don't we have a motion for policy then? So, they just didn't. So I think this is good to put this in policy. If folks have any follow-up questions, if you have an opportunity to look at this in detail, please send those questions or comments to Jason. But I do need a motion to, for the first reading.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading and approve Policy 632, Short-Term Borrowing. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to, for the first reading, approval of Policy 632, Short-Term Borrowing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Onto Agenda Item 12, Legislature Update. You know, we have talked about having a meeting with Senator Chatham. And it doesn't look like it's going to work for an in-person meeting. So I would like to propose a virtual meeting with him and, you know, check with his office, I don't know if he's available, and then check with you folks. Or have Jason check with you folks. So.
We have to.
Yeah, that. That's all I have right now for that report. Okay. Agenda Item 13, Public Comments. Pam, do we have any public comments? Pam?
Deb.
Or Deb, I'm sorry. I was looking at Deb. Sorry, he and yes, what time it is? Okay, so no public comments, future agenda items. Future agenda items.
Yeah, one I wanted to address, I did, I spoke with Chief DuR about the February Board meeting and we will be bringing that forward. We had a linky agenda for tonight, so we wanted to devote time to it. He is available and he and I will be putting together a presentation plan and I'm bringing it for the February Board meeting.
Okay. And also the February Board meeting is, I believe, when Pam is going to be doing School Finance 101?
I thought you would be for budget stuff.
For budget stuff.
I guess I need a, in scope because budgeting and finance could take a good eight hours to kind of go through. So if you, if you would give Jason your ideas. I kind of sent out a brief, he sent out a brief here, like the main topics of budgeting that I could probably trim down to like a ten to fifteen minute review. I mean, I don't want to spend an hour at your board meeting going through.
I'll read forward that, Pam, and I know we have had a lot of information shared. And Pam had sent out like a list and I had forwarded it to the board to ask if there's any specific things.
Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, I think maybe.
He sent that, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, but we specifically want budgeting, not school finance.
Right, because we start our budget process in January. So now is a good time to talk about that.
Okay, sounds good.
I will also be bringing the adult information Julie had requested from June 30, 2022, to July 1, 2023. And I forgot the other object, I was spitting folk.
Cookies and coffee.
Okay. I'll talk to Ms. Grant, so we can work out, okay.
And then, yeah, we will, we will set a date for a special meeting in the very near future to talk about charter school. Okay? So the board will consider moving into closed session per Wisconsin Stan shoots 19.85% one percent C with purpose of discussing personal contracts and the district administrator evaluation.
I'll make a motion to move to closed session.
Is it a second?
A second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
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 Julie, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy. Congrats.
Yeah.
Thank you.